Pledge of leisures.
Pledge of leisures to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Secretary Terry to note roll call Shelley.
Sorry, Barb is absent, Jeremy Pastrick is absent, and Crystal Lee is absent, all others present.
Thank you. Can we have the board correspondence report?
Yes, we have three little issues that are going on right now. The Joint Legislative Audit Committee voted to order an audit to analyze DPIs, monitoring the school district finances, following all the issues at Milwaukee Public Schools. The committee expanded the scope of the audit to include additional schools that report financial data, including choice in charter schools, and to meet the certain reporting thresholds. The November election is quickly approaching and the nation's eyes are fixed on Wisconsin. While the presidential, senate, and new legislative districts continue to draw attention, when the Wisconsin voters go to polls, they'll also find 137 school districts' referendums on the ballot in 120 districts, so a lot more schools are going to referendum again. Overall, 59 of those referendums will ask for temporary authority to increase the district's revenue limit and 21 will request authority to increase the revenue limit. November will also see the election of half of the 33 state senate districts and all 99 assembly districts. With all of the redistricting that was done along the way, and the retiring of legislators, there are going to be significant turnover expected in both chambers next session. So this could bring changes to any longstanding relationships schools may have built with the state legislators. So we want to make sure that everyone knows that WSB is going to be aware of that and will help us monitor and navigate.
Any questions or comments from Amy? None? Can I have the CISA report, Chrissy?
The CISA seven meeting, we discussed the PAC meeting. Thirty-three of the 38 superintendents attended. Two that, two superintendents that usually never go came this month, so they are super excited about the willingness for that group to get together. There are 10 new superintendents within our CISA, so we thought it was super important to be reaching out to our boards, talking to our supers, building relationships within our CISA to make sure everyone is successful. One of the things that we focused on at the end of last school year, with CISA seven provided us a report of all of the free things that our districts were able to take advantage of, so they do have all of that data. If you wanted to see the things that Algoma took advantage of that were free, no cost items, and then see the list of the rest of the stuff that maybe is out there that we could take advantage of if we wanted more. And then we got an Act 20 update and some training and discussed second reading of the Head Start policies.
Any questions or comments for Chrissy? Hearing none. We'll hear from our student representative, Sofia Ramirez.
Hi.
Hi, welcome.
You can stay right there and just tell us what you got.
Tell us what's going on.
There's some sports. There was a middle school football game at home at 4:30 today.
Did you go?
No, I did not. I was not able to attend. Friday, high school plays at basketball at 7:00 p.m. And then soccer, camp packed schedule. Monday, varsity is playing at Sturtevant Bay at 6:30. And middle school plays at Manitowoc at 4:30 as well today. And then Tuesday, varsity again versus Mariner at home at 4:30 p.m. And middle school again versus Ron Colly on the JV field here at Algoma. And Thursday, middle school again versus basketball in Sturtevant Bay. And Friday, JV one soccer plays Washington Island at Washington Island at 4:30 p.m.
That is good.
And they get to take a ferry up there then, huh?
Volleyball, as you can probably hear, middle school has a triangular, triangular here, which started at 4:30 p.m. And Thursday, JV one and varsity plays Gibraltar at home at 5:30 and 7:00 p.m. Saturday, varsity again has invitational at home and nine in the morning. And cross country has a meet at Mishkot. And bowling club signups are coming to a close.
What did you put up for bowling?
I don't know, I did. And I hope, a couple of my friends did as well.
Would you mind telling us a little bit about yourself? Like, what grade are you in?
I'm a junior in high school. I, in fact, do cross country, but I'm not able to attend a Mishkot meet this week Thursday. I play softball, and as I said before, I do cross country. It's my first year, and I think it's going pretty well. Not the fastest, but that's okay. I have two sisters, and I'm here with my mom. And my mom and my dad, and then...
You're National Society?
Oh, I'm in National Society. But I think Phoenix Program through WGB. And, and I'm the student council president.
Sofia also worked for the district over the summer.
Yes, the past, the past two summers I was helping the custodians clean the school.
Awesome. Well, you'll see us every month then. Feel free to bring mom along, that's great.
Make sure your phone's on.
I thought it was.
Well, you got, you got your first one out of the way, the rest are really easy now. You did a wonderful job, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And you get to leave if you want, or you can sit through the rest of our meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Don't feel obligated to stay, Morgan did it.
We're in Scottsdale, so we have PAC meetings.
Really nice to meet you, we'll see you next month.
Wonderful job. Is there any misconceptions or rumors? I don't know of any. Okay, moving on. Public persi- participation. There's one here. Board president announcements. I don't have any. Administration reports.
All right, we'll jump into our finance update. Amber will start us off. We'll do that, and then I'll go over the third Friday initial count and our open enrollment numbers so far that it's looking like. All right, Amber?
So, we're just starting the fiscal year, we're a couple months in now. Teachers, this is as of the end of August, so the teachers really haven't even been in school to start placing any orders for their classrooms or anything. So our numbers are really low, which is great, that's where we're expecting to be. Revenues so far this year that we've received are interest earnings, some student fees, the childcare fees, and wellness center fees, that's it. So that's why all these numbers are really low. So I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time here. On the next slide, we have the referendum debt, long-term capital, and the referendum capital. And we are looking at, and I wanted to emphasize this because this was talked about in the referendum community meetings. Last year, we collected $802,500 for the debt levy, the levy portion that's just for the debt. This year, we are going to be lowering that amount to $798,000. So I cannot stress that enough, that we kept our promise and did even better with lowering it, so.
Why are we lowering it?
Because our interest rates that we got for the debt issuance were way better than we were anticipating. So, we, that means we can lower the amount we have to collect to make the difference. Fund 46 will have expenditures this year. The auxiliary gym has been finished. We just paid, I think, the last bill this last week, so next month you're going to see some numbers up there. We do have a mower replacement, if it is approved tonight, that'll be on there. And then there's a enclosed cargo utility trailer that we'll be purchasing for the Leadership Through High Adventure summer school, they use that every year, so. Projects in Fund 49 are the referendum projects, they are proceeding forward. We have paid our first bill, it got paid in September, so it's not up on here. We are going to see a little bit of a savings from McKinstry. Or had started switching over all of our lights to LED. And McKinstry thought we were going to have to do that as part of this referendum project, so we're going to see a little bit of savings from there. So that brings us to the referendum financials. This is your monthly update on where we're at. So you got our beginning bills, just over 10 million. We spent $35,528 in August, that was the very first invoice we paid to McKinstry and then our CD placement fees. And we earned $15,431 in interest last month. So that left us with 10,000,32,000.
Really like this slide, thank you.
Yes, it's a good way to keep the community informed of where we're at, we can see how this is going to come up.
Did you find a way to put it on the webpage?
We got, I think I have this out there. I haven't found any pretty pie tracers or anything yet to do, but the information is out there, so. And then just a quick update for the board on where we're at in the budget process. You know, we adopted the preliminary budget in June so that we can outbreak. The final budget will be adopted in October, but we've had to update some information in the budget since last time we saw it. We updated the staffing-related expenditures, all the teaching positions are now filled. We did receive from the Department of Revenue our personal property aid estimates. So the state did away with personal property taxes. And to offset us not receiving those from the taxpayers, the state is going to give us an aid payment for that, so that's now in the budget. And then we'll also update our Fund 49 budget. That was not in there before because we didn't have a good handle on when the money was going to be spent, now we do. So, we finalized our estimates for Fund 39 debt levies we just talked about, and then we're finalizing all the grant carryover amounts from the WISE Grant portal from the Department of Public Instruction. And some items that we still need to work on, the revenue limit worksheet will not be ready for us until October. That's that last really important piece, because that's the biggest chunk of our funding. And then we'll do a final review with the Finance Committee prior to a public hearing at the October board meeting, and then we'll do our final adoption.
Do we have to set a budget review meeting?
Yeah, so we have a Finance Committee meeting scheduled for October 7th. It's going to be pushing it a little bit, because I don't think we'll have preliminary numbers or final numbers, yeah? We'll have an idea, but it will change slightly, I'm guessing. And then we will do budget hearing the hour before our October meeting. So 5 o'clock to 6 o'clock will be our annual budget hearing.
And that's October 21st.
All right, third Friday counts as of right now today. And again, our membership counts are not due until October 2nd to DPI, so these are very preliminary, they can change. We have to look at a couple other factors that I'll be meeting with Shelley and Susan on in the coming week here, but right now, we have one in early childhood, 30 in 4K, 31 in kindergarten, 37 in first grade, 36 in second grade, 46 in third grade, 43 in fourth grade, 43 in fifth grade, and 45 in sixth grade. When you get to our middle school and high school, 50 in seventh grade, 46 in eighth grade, 62, which is our largest class, is our freshman. Softwares are at 55, juniors are at 60, and seniors are at 51. If you add those all up, 636 students in the seats right now that we have.
Is that more or less than last year?
It's about the same.
Little Stars is not counted? Only there in early childhood.
Only early childhood, yep. As far as open enrollment in and out, this is based off of what I looked at this afternoon. Districts are still finalizing, so if we have someone open enrolled out, they can still make edits and changes up until, I believe, this Friday. So, right now, we have 47 students open enrolled into the district, which is three less than last year. There are 96 students open enrolled out of the district, which is 10 less than last year. So, once you're open enrolled in or out, you're grandfathered in, you don't apply every year, so. Any questions about this? That is all I have.
Any questions for Amber? Not hearing any. Katie, elementary's report?
Okay, we are back to school, the month has flown by very quickly. We had a lot of excitement, it's been a very, very warm start to the school year. It's also been a very successful start. All of our new staff are doing a fantastic job. We have a bunch of existing staff that have moved to new roles. They are doing really well, they've made a great transition too. We have had picture day, and we've already had a ton of walking field trips, especially just to get out of the building, enjoy the extra warm weather that we've been having this month. One of the highlights that kind of goes along with the first bullet point, but we did have Governor Evers visit the elementary school on Tuesday, September 10th. He was here for about 45 minutes. He visited a kindergarten classroom, a sixth grade classroom, and then he served milk to the third and fourth graders down in the cafeteria. It was a really cool experience for the students. They got to ask him questions. He came with a big entourage of people, so a lot of our younger students were just kind of intrigued by all of the suits. They kept asking, who is he, which one is the governor? 10 adults in a classroom. But it was a really great experience and we're really grateful to have been given that opportunity. It was part of the governor's back-to-school campaign. So he was telling us that he tries to visit each county in the state once per year, whether it's a school, a business, or for some other reason. But we made the cut, I guess, for County County for the school year, so it was, it was a really, really thing to see. And then lastly, some Act 20 updates. This is kind of behind the scenes where we've been living and breathing this past month. We continue to get multiple updates from DPI, CISA 7. The focus this month has been on the screener. So, as you, if you remember, the state selected a screener that is mandatory for all students in 4K through 3rd grade. It's the EAMS 1+ screener. So they made the fall assessment window optional, but a lot of districts wanted to have the fall data so that they could compare it to the winter and spring data. So we waited, 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 and Jesse was helpful in just kind of keeping us updated on what he saw on his end. The state, just last week, Friday morning, uploaded all of the students into the system, so we have been kind of scrambling to get all of the students assessed. Huge kudos to Danielle Schultz and Shawna Anders. They took on the bulk of this work and did most of the heavy lifting on this, trained the teachers, looked to get the resources for the teachers. They have been doing all of the assessing of the students because our teachers already completed their beginning of the school year assessments, so we didn't want to, you know, pull them from their classrooms and their students again. So they completed all of that as of today. So, the next step then is kind of using that data to piece it together for the personal reading plans. So, and then figuring out interventions. So it's been a little bit of a whirlwind, but we're exactly where we wanted to be and we have exactly what we need so that we can hopefully set up a good process moving forward. In addition to this, Charlotte Meyer came last week Thursday for a half-day with our Lit team. We're just continuing to review curriculums, so we reviewed two additional ones on Thursday. And then she is doing a virtual update with all of the elementary staff on Thursday this week during PLC time, just to fill everybody in who's not on the Lit team, on where we're at, what we've done so far, which curriculums we've looked at, and then what are some things that we're seeing so far. So, that's kind of where the bulk of all of our time is spent this month.
Questions or comments for Katie? Thank you, Katie. Middle High School principal report?
All right, in light of recent events in our country, we reviewed our school safety plan at our staff meeting on 9/11. After we discussed our safety plan, and then invited the teachers to have that conversation with the students to make sure they were comfortable with what that looks like. Then this last staff meeting, I asked for feedback from the teachers and there was none. So I guess the discussion went pretty well. We just continue to understand that our best way to be safe is to connect with each and every student, make sure that we understand our relationship with them, how they're, how they're doing. One change we are making is that we are going to greet every single student every morning, so we'll be having teachers assigned to every door to just greet them as they enter. On the coming, is kicking off week of September 30th, this year's theme is decades. The football game will be October 4th versus Jilla, the dance will be the next day. 8 o'clock will start, 8:30 will be the grand march, 9 o'clock, everyone except the dancers are excused to go home. And then we'll go to midnight, and it will be a glorious evening. New staff, I had the opportunity to observe formerly two of our new staff and formerly one of our new staff. They're doing great things. It is very fun to see how they're fitting into our staff, into our other staff, and into our culture. I've already witnessed middle school post fiesta. I'm going to World Dairy Expo Day with Mr. Neuer coming up here on October 1st, I'm excited about that. And then Ms. Pavlott is exploring with our school counselor, social studies and history dual credit courses, how that's going to look in the future. So they're all working really, really hard and fitting in well with the rest of our staff.
Awesome. I like the idea of somebody saying hi to every kid coming in. Questions or comments for Dave? Thanks, Dave. Pathfinders, AVA, and Pack of Pups, Katie?
Okay, I'll start with AVA. We have six new students this year, two of them are brand new to the district. Both of them are homeschooled in the past, so they're new to... Well, one of them hasn't been homeschooled since 2nd grade, so he's very new to the public school setting. But they're both doing awesome and are bringing just a whole lot of different energy and fun to AVA. We, on Friday, are taking students to do a project with the Charter School in Denmark. We're meeting at the beach in Two Rivers. So we're looking forward to kids just being able to hang out with other kids in a charter school, knowing that they're not, sometimes they feel kind of isolated and alone because there's not obviously any other charter schools around here, so. That'll be good for them. And also, AVA has a new promo video, I think Jesse sent it out to you guys. If you haven't seen it, it's on the AVA page. My video referred it, a phenomenal job, it is a really incredible video. Pathfinder, it is evident the need for Pathfinder this year. We've already had four kids switch to partial days and some full days down to Pathfinder in the first three weeks of school. From areas, different regions. But it's, like I said, the, there wasn't a lit ton of kids to start, but I think we're already up to 10, so. They, let's see, really tries to get them out a lot, so they were at the Wildlife Sanctuary two weeks ago and found ferret gland last week. And then Pack of Pups, we still have some spots at the daycare, and we'll go to the apple orchard.
Questions or comments for Marie?
Katie.
Katie, sorry. Sorry. Hearing none, we'll hear from Special Ed and Wallace, report from Marie.
I'm going to go a little overboard, if that's okay. The first thing that I wanted to highlight is we have a couple students that are going to be getting some job floor experience over at ESI, which is something that we haven't really had a partnership with in a while. So, two days a week, they'll be able to get paid and actually work on the floor at ESI with a job coach, which I'm really excited for them and that we're able to kind of get that up and running again and hopefully it can be an opportunity for more students to come. A physical therapy update, as you know, we do have a contract with CISA 7 for our itinerant services. Unfortunately, we were not able to find a physical therapist for us in person, yet. They did offer a position to someone starting in January. However, in the meantime, on your action items for approval is hopefully e-therapy, which is not ideal, but it's something to get us some therapy for our students in the meantime, that will require either a peer professional or a teacher to be with the student at the time to help navigate that virtual platform and assist them in therapy. It's for 11 students, so not a huge caseload of students, but hopefully that will help in the meantime until we can get someone in person. And then in front of you, Jesse had handed out our annual suppusion and restraint report. It's kind of lengthy, but just annually, we have to report to the school board what our suppusion and restraint numbers are, and then report that to the state by December 1st. What I did is just sort of explain what protocols we have in place for our school district. We have staff that are trained, we have trainers to train us in nonviolent, like anything hands-on would be the last resort. However, like many schools, sometimes you kind of get a student or two that gives you a whirlwind and you just kind of have to make sure that everyone's safe. With that being said, our numbers have significantly gone down in the past few years. Two years ago, the 21-22 school year, we were flagged for having a very high number. However, our numbers have drastically reduced. But with that higher number that we did have, even though we've naturally come up with processes and procedures and all different kinds of reasons to, you know, problem solve around that, we were offered a grant from the Department of Public Instruction for up to $10,000 to support our special education staff, to support those neurodiverse students as well as any other student. And what that encompasses is we will have a 10-meeting commitment with someone from state who is going to help us go through like a data dig and are providing free educational resources for us. And that $10,000 goes towards compensating our staff for their time. So, in a way, it's a really good thing that we have the support. However, it's also a good thing that we have made positive change in that area. So that was kind of all over the border, but that's all that I have.
Any questions or comments for Marie?
How old are your students going to ESI? Is that only like junior seniors or?
They are, let's see, one of them is a freshman and the other one is a sophomore.
So just work permit age?
Yep, both students with disabilities that will be able to get a unique experience.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marie. Committee reports. We really only have one, Building and Grounds Committee. We met on the 16th of September. We discussed, I guess, quite a few things. Mainly the lawnmower, we discussed, we hashed it over for quite a while. There was a motion made and seconded to accept the offer, or not the offer, but to accept the amount for the lawnmower with the trade-in. We also discussed the trailer that the school is thinking about purchasing. We discussed the condition of the mobile resource unit, or van, or whatever bus, and how bad a shape it is. We discussed the bids for the line sprayers for the field. I think Justin and who else were going to go and get some bids?
And the trailer. They were going to do on the trailer.
On the trailer.
And Justin.
Yeah, on the, okay, on the trailer, yep. And then we discussed using salt or sand on the sidewalks and parking lots. And Jesse was going to do some calling around and get some bids for that also. So, I guess that was just of the meeting. Any questions or comments? That's awesome. Not hearing any, we'll move on. Other items for discussion, Fall Regional Meeting and Workshop on September 25th.
Yes, I've got everyone that is going all registered for Wednesday night. So, we have three board members planning to attend, so.
Action items, approval of regular board minutes of September 26th, 2024, and Building and Grounds Transportation Committee meeting minutes of September 16th, 2024.
So moved.
Could I have a motion?
So moved.
Take it. Motion made by Chrissy, CISA 7. Motion made by Chrissy, seconded by Chris Benish. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Presentation and approval of bills. Could I get a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Chris Benish, seconded by Amy Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approve the ski co- the ski club taking a trip on December seventh, uh, that should be twenty twenty-four to Norway Mountain in Norway, Michigan. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Chrissy, seconded by Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approval, approve the contract as presented with e-therapy for eighty-five dollars per hour of virtual physical therapy.
So moved.
Take it. Motion made by Chrissy, seconded by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approve annual academic and career planning plan.
I'll make that motion to approve.
Take it.
Motion made by Amy, seconded by Chris. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, approve the purchase of a Hustler Super one oh four lawnmower in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars from Luxorver Improvement Company with a trade-in of the existing mower.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Chris, seconded by Chrissy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Approve final entries to close out twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year budget.
So moved.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Chrissy, seconded by Amy. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Request for future agenda items? None being said?
No.
Could I get a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Chrissy, seconded by Chris. Roll call vote. Amy?
Yes.
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 And I'll say yes.